Wake up. It's a little long.
It's kinda like, I feel like if I haven't reached my seat, you put the end of the spell that I need to hear the prince of talks.
Well, that's the tardy bell.
Yeah.
Kristi made it in.
Yeah, yeah, right as the bell was going on, just on time.
That's the warning signal.
You're late for home run.
You're fine, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, now I think we're good to go. Um, because this is our first meeting of the year, I will open it up um, for the purpose of nominating the chair for planning board for the year twenty twenty five. So, I will open it up, are there any nominations for chair for planning board?
I would like to nominate our current chair, our past chair.
And I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seems to be unanimous, Megan, you are chair.
Okay, thank you, I will take over then, and I will um, ask for election of the vice chair for the calendar year twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion uh, for me, Gwen, to be vice chair?
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
A couple of seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, we have a vice chair then as well. And um, I appreciate the opportunity to serve in the chair on this board. I'm gonna deviate slightly from our usual routine this morning to just take a minute to recognize the passing of our fellow board member and friend Gary Ferguson. Um, he served on this board for many years, several years. And he also worked for the town for many years um, previously, so um, we will miss Gary's enthusiasm and passion on this board. And I just wanted to take a minute, deviate from the usual, to take a minute and mention Gary.
He will be missed.
Yes.
He will be missed.
Okay. Um, let's move on then to the approval of our agenda for the January twenty one meeting.
Can we make a motion to approve the agenda?
Please, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't see anybody in the public, Duke, did you wanna speak to us? Oh, you do, I'm sorry, okay, great. Welcome, Duke, I didn't mean to take you for granted, I thought you were here just to be with us. Okay, great, thanks for being here.
I know you're gonna speak about ADUs tonight, and I looked over yours, I haven't studied and studied it, and going through this, each particular town, and each town, they're all similar, but, but they're, they're different. Nothing jumped out at me that, that we couldn't support, the Home Build Association couldn't support, it looks like a real good ordinance. I do warn you before you finish, let's try not to over-regulate them. Your town is not gonna be overrun by ADUs. I know in Dare County, they were talking about two thousand available lots for ADUs. And, and I was planning, you can't just put them in the commercial zones that are high density when no one's gonna build them, and they said, oh, we're gonna try, this is it, and we'll do a report in six months and see how many permits taken out. But there's two thousand available lots, and when they were finished in six months, there was two permits taken out. So they changed it back to, to the low, that uh, the low-density residential. Kill Devil Hills did the same thing, they had to change it back 'cause nothing was being built. Uh, they only had it commercial. So, let's be careful, your town's not gonna be overrun with it, it's a good ordinance, it's a good tool in the workforce housing toolbox that we're, we're trying to work in, and the crisis that we're trying to do about rental housing, it's available rental housing. It serves a lot of purpose, one is it gives a house for working, somebody who comes here in our workforce. Second, the owner of the home or a new owner can qualify for a larger mortgage, just they can legally count that, that rental income as, as income. And it gives them a little easier chance to get a mortgage right now. Housing here is, is astronomical. The median price house is over six hundred thousand dollars. Um, there's nobody moving in here that, that's for a resident and getting a job, they could afford that kind of a mortgage. So we need more rental houses, and, and, and I'm sorry, I know it's not what the people in all the towns want, the people in Dare County want. But this is a fact of life. You're not gonna have what you had growing up here, you're not gonna have um, what it was like twenty years ago. There's nowhere in the country. And our legislature in Raleigh understands this, their phones for the last two years have been inundated with people who can't afford to live here, or getting kicked out of their home, their rental home, and don't know where to go. And it's one of the reasons why they're tinkering and, and playing, and it's not popular what they're doing, and they understand that. But um, it's a necessity because they're trying to make housing a, you know, place we can put them, because it's for the betterment of the state. So, anyway, I thank you for the time you've taken, and we'll, hopefully, you can wrap it up today and send it on to the commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Duke, we appreciate it. Now, I think it's safe to say that I don't see anyone that wants to make public comment. So let's move on to the approval of our minutes from actually November, since we did not meet in December. Anyone, everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Any changes or corrections?
No.
Make a motion?
I have a motion to approve the, the minutes of November nineteenth as submitted?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lily, for the minutes, as always. Um, so we don't have any action items today, we need to get David out of here. Um, so we will start with a report on the Board of Commissioners' actions from their December fourth and January eighth meetings. And Kelly?
Thank you, I'll run through these pretty quickly. Um, I will say, just to comment quickly on uh, Duke's comment, we don't have any action items today, but we're gonna discuss ADUs, and so perhaps next month, we'll be ready for action, so. Um, quickly running through our uh, December fourth BOC meeting. We did hold the public hearing for the UDO text amendments related to hotel parking standards. Uh, the board adopted the ordinance amending the UDO um, with the one correction that was noted. I will say, it is likely that this runs afoul of SB three eighty-two regarding down zoning, because it is a more prohibitive parking standard. Um, so we'll have to research that, but um. Provided our monthly report, and then uh, they did approve the site plan approval for the Dare EMS station, the Dare County EMS station. Um, we had an update on Senate Bill three eighty-two, and that is pretty much all we had at the December meeting. Uh, let's see if I can easily get over to January eighth, there we go. Uh, at the January eighth meeting, the Board of Commissioners approved a special use permit site plan amendment for the Soundside Event Site. That included the uh, pickleball courts uh, and the boardwalk, as well as the inclusion of all the other sites that have essentially been used as part of the event site. What else do we have in here? Um, there was a question brought up about residential signage and our current UDO requirements, and it was consensus that at the next uh, Board of Commissioners' meeting in February, that staff would provide a presentation on what types of signage are allowed in residential districts, and then they would continue the conversation to see if any amendments were necessary. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, anybody have questions for Kelly? So the signage, I guess, would be like real estate signs and, and residential, there aren't put so many signs, period, right?
It is, there are some requirements in there um, that states while you have an active building permit open, that the um, the builder or any tradesman on the job can put their sign out. But once the home is CO'd, then that signage has to be removed. There's also some language in there about how, if a house is for sale, what type of signage it can have. If there's a real estate agent on site, what type of signage can be had there. But um, we found that there's properties where um, there had been recent construction, but it's been CO'd. Um, but there's still some signs left on the property, so.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
I have a question, just real quickly, regarding the um, the signage. Does that overrule uh, POAs um, covenants?
It doesn't, any covenants would be enforced as well. So if the covenants are more stringent than the town code, then, then the POA or HOA would enforce that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, any town updates?
No town updates from our side.
Okay. Okay, let's move on into our discussion items, and we will start with a continued discussion related to ADUs.
Um, I have, I'm having a problem opening my PDFs on here, does anybody else having that problem?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm like. I'm not getting anything to open. I'm not even.
So, I think it's, it is a different interface.
I'm not even in mine.
All right, Kristi, tell it girl.
Yeah, we may just need to refresh it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, just need to refresh it.
Thank you.
Yeah, show me what I have to do.
Well, I'll, I'll share my paper with you, and I have a paper to share.
Refresh it?
Yeah.
Oh.
Lily, can you do that? So they, they had a long weekend. Lily. Can you maybe just refresh?
Yeah.
Just refresh it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what she said, yeah.
Well, though, wow, how about that?
Okay. Do we have a tutorial by Lily?
Thank you.
I thought it was just me, my career in art, too.
That's good.
I really need to have something to look at.
That's good, okay. And then small BOC.
Maybe, maybe.
I think I'm in, I think so. If not, I'll act like I am. Fake it.
Look, that mouse was left a ton of.
It looks different.
It is.
I think my mouse is.
They changed the interface. Okay, everybody, oh, we're getting there.
I tend to ramble, so I'll probably technically go ahead.
Yes, why don't you say hello to Kelly if you don't mind?
Yeah, we're just beginning.
No, wait, it's, it's not rambling, it's informative, but if you would, that would be great.
All right. Um, so, we did not meet in December, so the last time we spoke about this was at your November meeting. Um, at that time, staff had provided an update um, and presented some new definitions for you to consider. Um, we talked about accessory dwelling unit, attached accessory dwelling unit, um, or accessory apartment, detached accessory dwelling unit, or perhaps calling it a backyard cottage. Um, and developing a definition for a sleeping room, as well as changing some of the terminology that we had for, for term rental partial house. Um, those definitions were included in your packet, and after our public input sessions, we felt like those definitions might be beneficial in helping understand ADUs and the difference between attached ADUs that are internal to the home versus the detached ADUs. Um, we also, at the conversation in November, there seemed to be consensus on a variety of things, and I've spelled those out in the staff report, um, recognizing that ADUs exist in two distinct forms, attached and detached, and agreeing to the importance of um, creating separate and clear definitions for each. Acknowledging feedback from public input sessions that highlighted the inequities in allowing short-term rentals while not providing opportunities for long-term rentals. Um, and the planning board noted that they did share the community's concern with that, especially in light of workforce housing challenges. The planning board uh, supported the application of a threshold to ensure that any ADU remains clearly subordinate to the primary single-family dwelling, whether attached or detached. Um, and the planning board was supportive of considering allowances of detached ADUs throughout the town, uh, but only on lots with a minimum lot size of sixteen thousand square feet in area. And we have some um, updates on the number of lots that that would apply to further down in the report. Um, also considering the allowance of attached ADUs townwide, regardless of lot size, provided that all dimensional requirements of the zoning district are met, including stormwater management standards. Recognizing the need for appropriate parking requirements for both attached and detached ADUs, and agreed that we need to um, carefully consider and review those. And so, I won't go through all the details, I'll scroll down quickly. Um, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at this, but um, some updates to the definition of accessory dwelling unit, um, attached ADU, accessory apartment, these are unchanged from your November meeting. Um, also, we did have some updates to the definition of short-term rental partial home, which again, we talked about those previously. Um, as I noted, we did talk about how we should explore establishing a threshold to ensure that any accessory dwelling unit um, remains subordinate to the primary single-family dwelling. Recognizing the importance of avoiding the creation of non-conformities in existing developments. Um, staff did research several known partial home short-term rentals to assess their size, excluding any outdoor spaces, decks and shared spaces like that. Um, from that sampling, the majority of units were found to be in the three hundred to five hundred square foot range. However, there were a few larger units, some up to eight hundred or more. The larger units tended to resemble duplexes with layouts that mirrored um, the first floor, or rather, the, the second floor mirrored below on the ground floor, um, blurring the distinction between ADUs and duplexes. Um, I did put in here that previous iterations of the draft ordinance language for ADUs with the town has recommended that the enclosed habitable living area of an accessory dwelling unit not exceed fifty percent of the size of the principal dwelling, or six hundred square feet, whichever is less. Um, the planning board may also want to discuss whether there's a need to provide different size restrictions from attached versus detached ADUs. Um, so that might be one conversation that we want to have today before we start formalizing. Are we comfortable with that fifty percent or six hundred square feet? Um, or do we wanna consider something um, consider something else? Uh, like I noted earlier, the planning board did talk about allowing detached ADUs throughout the town. Um, but allowing them only on lots that were sixteen thousand square feet or greater. Our deputy planning director, Joe Costello, did a GIS analysis um, to identify the number of properties that met that criteria. And the analysis revealed that one thousand six hundred and twenty-six properties within the town are sixteen thousand square feet or larger. The map is included in your packet, um, but I did wanna note that the map includes um, a lot of larger properties that are really undevelopable, such as Jockeys Ridge State Park, several open spaces within the village at Nax Head, and the conservation properties of Nax Head Woods. Um, while there's a concentration of lots greater than sixteen thousand square feet in the northern section of town, specifically around the hills of Nax Head subdivision, and Villa Dunes, and Southridge, the majority of these sixteen thousand square foot lots are on the oceanfront. We also talked about parking standards, so I did provide uh, the current parking standards for ADUs for Dare County, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Manio. Um, Dare County seems to have um, the highest requirement, which is two ten-by-twenty parking spaces. Uh, Kill Devil Hills is one space per ADU, plus one space for each bedroom over one, which I think might be good for consideration as well. Kitty Hawk is one space per ADU. Duck just has theirs aligned with their single-family dwelling parking requirements, and Manio is one space per ADU. Um, Kitty Hawk and Duck also require that the ADU be served by the same driveway as the principal dwelling. Um, and we would just encourage that there be discussion on that as well, that might be something that we wanna consider to um, scroll down, so that we can get to our maps. Um. Hopefully, y'all can pull this up on your computers, but if not, I'll have it up on the screen as well. Um, as you can see, these parcels that are shaded are those that are sixteen thousand square feet or greater. We do have a lot um, here in the northern end of town. Um, you'll see some here through the village, uh, some over here on the Causeway. And then when you go down and you look at South Nax Head, a lot of these are along the oceanfront as well. So that delineates that sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six um, parcels. If you have any questions on this, I'm sure Joe can um, help out with that as well. Um, and that's it, the other attachment that we had in there was just discussions from previous meetings, so. Happy to answer any questions, facilitate any conversation, again, parking is kind of the key thing. What do we consider subordinate, is there a percentage or a number that we wanna put to that? And are we still comfortable with um, attached ADUs townwide and detached with that sixteen thousand square foot um, limit?
Thank you, Kelly, does anybody have questions for Kelly regarding the information she's provided us?
Did the other towns allow, all the other towns allow ADUs, both types of ADUs across the board? Like, did they have restrictions on where they allow them?
No, they're in specific zoning districts.
Okay.
Um, they're not townwide, let me see, I might have included some of that in the previous report, I'm not sure of that. I can try to pull that information for you, I, like Duke said, I think Kill Devil Hills has theirs in the residential zoning area now. Originally, it was in the commercial, but they.
Problem with attached, and trying to put them underneath as a local elevation standards.
Mm-hmm.
When these houses were built, and, and, and a lot of them, we would have paid a little more attention to where we put the setbacks, uh, insectic systems. And it's just a driveway coming in off the street. Now you've got a uh, coordinated with the, with the flood ordinances, and a lot of them don't work. So that's, Kitty Hawk has had a lot of that, so that's why they have separate uh, ADUs. It's becoming more and more popular, I guess, in that town more than anything else, but they also allow the ADUs to have short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, so right now, we haven't really discussed specific zoning districts other than residential zoning districts. So the R one, the R two, the R three, and potentially the CR, if you want them on the oceanfront.
So the size of the lot is basically dic, you know, dictating the situation right now, which is I think that works okay, I mean, I think. I think that works okay. I mean, I think the, the market will control what, what people do. You know, some of this green, some of this green we see, like you said, is undevelopable, undevelopable. Then there's also a fair, there's some commercial, there's other, right? Am I looking, if I'm looking at it right?
Yeah, this is.
We've got like Doughty Park and the schools, and so there's a fair amount of commercial.
So commercial could have, a business could have a small dwelling.
Well, that's a separate issue that we're gonna.
If it was an ADU. Are we not talking about commercial at all here? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's in the zone. No, you're absolutely right. It's, it's definitely on this map. There are lots large enough, but the multi-use is another issue that I think's on your work plan.
There is. There's two things to think about for commercial. So we already allow accessory residential for commercial developments.
Hmm.
Um, that's already in the code. Um, but then, when we did our multifamily ordinance, we talked about needing to come back and provide a mechanism for existing mixed-use developments to provide some type of multifamily
Mm-hmm.
on that property. Like, say if shops at ten point five wanted to have ten units on their property, how we negotiate that?
Mm-hmm.
So that's actually part of our work plan for twenty twenty-five, is to bring that back for discussion. But, um, commercially, any commercial business is already allowed to have up to two accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
So that's already in there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess my point would be that things that are developed commercial already, or have that, you know, opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
And then, think, you know, it's gonna tend to go to the highest and best use. So my thoughts would be that commercial undeveloped or redeveloping commercial property isn't gonna end up just being, isn't gonna turn to single-family or single-family with ADUs, I wouldn't imagine.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's just not what the market would bear, you know, with the, so. Um. What are we thinking? I, um, I think it would be good for us to talk about the subordinate situation, get that nailed down if we can, because that's important to me for one. I think we need to be sure that we're not allowing a bunch of duplexes. It was, in effect, what they are, right?
Yeah. I do agree it should be subordinate.
So, and we, we're gonna need a hard and fast figure on that, correct?
Ideally, yes.
Or I mean, we're, to suggest.
Yeah, um, and then we can, we'll bring it back in a more normal manner. But like I said, previous iterations of our ADUs, um, have recommended fifty percent of the principal.
Mm-hmm.
Or six hundred square feet, whichever is greater, um.
Whichever is less.
Or.
Grade.
Says lesser.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is less, that is correct.
Right.
Um, and so. Um, like I said, we had a hard time identifying those that are existing. I mean, we did not identify non-compliant ADUs, because then that would put us in a fairly awkward situation of having to, um.
Enforce.
Enforce. So, what we did do is a handful of short-term rentals that we are aware of and are really functioning like an attached ADU currently, except for short-term purposes only. Um, we were able to go back and look at those, and those seem to range between three hundred and five hundred square feet. Like I said, there were some outliers that were eight hundred and more, but those were the ones that were literally where the, um, you know, where the beach box just mimicked below, um, what they had, and it, it really did resemble more of a duplex and less of a, an accessory.
Right.
So are we comfortable with the fifty percent, or?
I'm comfortable with fifty percent. I don't think I would put the six hundred square feet number in there, because we could have a twenty-five hundred square foot house that has a unit on the ground floor, and six hundred would be way less than fifty percent.
But would that be a duplex if you have like a thousand square foot house underneath there?
Well, no, but I'm just thinking if it was seven fifty or eight hundred. If it was a nice roomy bedroom, living room suite with an accessory kitchen and a nice bathroom, um, it would probably be eight hundred square feet.
It, it's, it's, and, and what I'm looking at is the difference between what you're saying and subservient is, is, is kind of an ideology, not necessarily if, I, if you put attached versus detached. Um, idea being if you have four corners to the structure and you raise it up and you put a salt box on the top floor and then you decide to just develop out the bottom side, at that point, you are smack dab on fifty percent. Um, the question is, s- where does, where does six hundred feet lean up against that and what, if, if it's large, what are you getting into? And I, I kind of struggle a little bit about that. It's also, as well as thinking about from an emergency side of this. These houses are gonna be confusing. If you approach this house in an emergent situation, where are you gonna get into it? What's gonna be going on there, et cetera? I think that the layout needs to be a little bit understandable, and that might ding into that under fifty percent side. Um, to make it easily understandable to the responders, because I hear this a lot when I listen to emergency traffic, we don't know how to get in. There are a lot of doors here, we're looking at a lot of doors, and we don't know how to get in. So, um, I, there needs to be maybe a little bit of effort to, to understand how to make it eas- more easily understandable. And I understand where the driveways go, I don't think we need to necessarily go that way, but it almost seems like there's so many models out there that there's a, there should be a little bit more that we can understand from what people have messed up.
So do I hear you to say that there should be no number at all, or that this number should be higher? On the minimum, or the maximum square footage of the?
Little higher.
Little higher?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have a twenty-five hundred square foot house and you put something bigger than a six hundred, then you're looking at something over three thousand square feet, so you've gotta be on a big lot. Okay. So then we're not looking at this map, because this includes sixteen thousand square foot?
Right.
We're not looking at just this map?
Um, on a, yeah, on a sixteen thousand square foot lot, you can only have five thousand square feet of habitable area, period.
Right. Not five thousand. On sixteen? On sixteen, yes, okay.
Sixteen or greater, um, five thousand square foot max, less, it's thirty-five hundred. So in no scenario, whether your ADU is attached or detached, are you going to be able to exceed five thousand square feet of habitable?
No.
Again, do we need, do we need to talk about the definition of habitable? Yes.
Yes.
That's confusing to me.
Yes.
Um.
And that's kind of a little bit of what I'm talking about, you know, access egress. If you have a, a breeze way between the two, that's not habitable space. But it makes it easily under, easily understood by responders, what's where. Um, and I, I'm, I'm a little, I'm looking at fifty percent, that's a high line for me. Um, I'm, you know, I'm, I, I think it's okay, but I don't think it should be any more than fifty percent.
Fifty percent of habitable.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it's, it's another one of these things where I'm trying to, I'm trying to imagine what it would look like, and my imagination fails me because I don't design these things.
Well, you said there was quite a few that were as small as three hundred, or there's some.
Yeah, I mean, the, the majority were between three hundred and five hundred. What we have been seeing, we don't have a short-term rental registration anymore, but when we did, and people were registering their short-term rentals, that was consistently what we were seeing, was three to five hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, part of the conversation here is, a lot of our short-term rentals are already functioning like accessory dwelling units. It's just, short-term rentals, there's an inequity there between short-term and long-term rental, so. Um, but yeah, loo- looking back at the registration, the majority of short-term rentals are the ground floor enclosure, three hundred to five hundred square.
Does it make sense to have a shared space category in this? Because let's say, you know, one's gonna be subservient, but there is going to be a certain amount of, there might be a certain amount of space, they've shared laundry room. I don't, I don't know that, but let's say, or something else like that, so there might be some shared space, and then should that be part of it?
Hmm, I guess.
I specifically excluded shared spaces, because I think if somebody is sharing a laundry, that's, obviously, that's not something that we're going to enforce. If they have a deck or outdoor areas that they share, that's, again, not something that I envisioned as enforcing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets complicated.
Mm-hmm.
So how does everybody else feel about going up a little bit on that six hundred? And, and do we, I guess this takes us right to the issue of do we want detached and attached to be the same, have the same size limitations? Um, because it seems.
No more than fifty percent. I totally agree with that.
No more than fifty? I agree too.
Attached and detached.
Both the same.
Yeah. But then like the, the size, the size square footage limitation, I'm kind of torn on. Six hundred seems low for a bigger home, but. Eight hundred seems large.
Yeah, I think it, you know, it's relative. I would imagine that, I mean, do you have any feel, Kelly, for when you did this, like, survey? Was it, did it tend to be smaller homes that had these, or can, do you feel comfortable even making a guess? I mean?
You know, a lot of what I saw were, were.
Beach boxes?
Westside full-time permanent residences who were using a short-term rental to offset expenses, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
I think when you're looking at STRs on the oceanfront, they tend to be a little bigger. But the majority of what we were seeing registered during those years were the west side.
I, I, I think about the, the numbers, I think there needs to be real thought about differences between attached and detached, and, um.
You mean the size?
Yeah.
Why?
Um, I ju- I, it, there's a, there's a part of me that, that that looks at, um, it becomes a secondary house. If, if it is, if, if, if it's fifty percent and it's detached.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that is, that's what it's gonna be.
Yeah, and, yeah, but, but it, then.
It is a second dwelling, no doubt about it.
And then it's not subservient. Then it's, perhaps, do you see, you know, it, it's very, very similar to.
I mean, it's not the, it's not the main house, you know, I mean.
Right.
Still, it would be same size. I, I don't see much distinction between them being attached and detached from that standpoint, but. So you're thinking if you put, if you closed in underneath or added six hundred square feet to your twenty-five hundred square foot house, or eight hundred square feet, that would be preferable to building an eight hundred square foot ADU?
I, I think that, you know, as far as, it, while it, density, I'm, I'm really throwing that out the window. I'm thinking more of, if you have a sixteen hundred foot lot and you have a, a, a property that can build out the area underneath it, is it, it, it will increase the density on that lot, but it actually won't increase the lot coverage at all.
So you're thinking in terms of lot coverage?
Yeah, so, yeah, actually, that's, that's the best way for me to, yeah, that's good, that's.
What size are you comfortable with, with detached?
I, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm just throwing this in, I'm just throwing that on the grill right now. I'm saying that, you know, when a lot coverage, I think, might be something we wanna look at, because green space is nice. And when we're making them neighborhood to live in, if there's a sixteen thousand square foot property that has two fifty-fifty buildings, one is the main house and one is the other house, it looks some, it, it looks like it's a cottage court at that point.
Well, they're not gonna be fifty-fifty. The, the second, the subordinate one will be fifty percent of the size.
Of the size.
Half the size of the primary, the size of the primary.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they won't be, you know, one will clearly be subordinate, I, but, I mean, I, your point is, I take your point.
Yes.
They could be.
However, you know, lot coverage is lot coverage, right? So that same person could redevelop.
Yeah.
Or, you know, so to me, it's always worth considering that. You know, you can knock the whole thing down and build, just build one bigger structure.
Yeah, okay.
For, for, I mean, that's just a consideration. I'm not saying, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, and some of these lots, even these lots that we're looking at, are, are certainly already maxed out for various reasons. They don't have, you know, so, um, I think it's probably gonna be pretty rare to find a place that you could actually build a detached one.
Yeah. And, and, well, and this is the other, another question. If you do a detached, would they be, would they be allowed to exist on one septic situation? Or would those be, would that be dictated more by the individual's case?
Right, right now, the town code only allows one septic system per lot, so they would have to tie in.
Okay.
We've seen people get creative, doing like a gr- you know, um, but yeah, a grinder and a pump and things like that. But, um, we do only allow one septic system currently.
Okay.
And I do wanna say there is legislation pending out there on ADUs that could really just, they were mentioned in everything that.
As with everything we do.
Which, the legislation would, I, I think we should still probably try, right, Kelly? That's what we're doing to do what we think is best, but yeah.
No, no, no.
I mean, they may decide.
Yeah.
You can't disallow this.
I'm comfortable with, with what you guys are throwing out there. I just wanted to, to kind of bring that other stuff out there.
So shall we try to come up with a number? Um, I think we're agreed on fifty percent.
Yeah.
Sounds to me, or less. But what about that square footage cap?
Five hundred seems.
Well, we were looking at eight hundred in here.
Yeah.
Before.
Mm-hmm.
And like on the option B or whatever.
Mm-hmm. You think eight hundred's okay? I mean, better to go, you can go down instead of up.
That would, you know, the thing is, if we're saying fifty percent, and they brought it up, I mean, if you've got a larger house, fifty percent is, could be twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, it could be a really big.
Right. Right, and then, yeah, that's pretty big.
Right.
You could put three bedrooms if you did anything that big.
Well, I think it's a maximum of two bedrooms, right?
It is.
Two, two.
Okay.
So you, you know, you could fit them, but you're not gonna be allowed to.
Well, the other thing too is, is, we're, we're striving for long term. Twelve hundred might accommodate a couple with a, a small child, or maybe four people, I don't know.
Right, right.
So the point being is, why, why would we wanna cap it if we already have the fifty percent in there?
Don't cap it at all, you're saying?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, off the top of my head, I think it's because you do, you get, you get into a duplex situation if you start. Even if it, size-wise, it might be acceptable, I hear what you're saying, but then, is it really subordinate if you have a family of four living in, you know, and we have, people are gonna design these with this in mind probably and build them, you know, so. Go ahead, Kelly.
Just as information, I knew I had pulled this previously, it's up on the screen. Um, this is what other locations are doing. So Dare County is a maximum of twelve hundred, twelve hundred square feet, heated and non-heated. Um.
For the ADU, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and then Kill Devil Hills is eight hundred square feet. Kitty Hawk is eight hundred square feet. Um, fif- fifty percent or eight hundred. Kitty Hawk, fifty percent or eight hundred. Duck, uh, if detached, cannot be larger than eight hundred. If attached, cannot be larger than the square footage of the principal. And Manio is fifty percent or six hundred.
Fifty percent of what?
Six hundred.
What, six hundred?
So there's precedence here for eight hundred. I've heard some people talk about that.
Uh-huh.
Um.
So Duck is the most lenient one of anybody.
They probably don't, and they probably don't have any.
And they don't have a lot of length. It's like this.
And I will say, I did this probably a year ago.
Right.
Some things may have changed, in terms of the numbers, I mean.
Right.
Can I just add one quick thing in here?
Sure.
We're looking at, and, and what I'm more concerned with is long-term rental. And, and I can remember when I was nineteen years old, we got married and we had a nice apartment, and within a few months, now I got pregnant, and we had moved out. And then had a salt loo, and never had as nice apartment as I had there, but, you know, six hundred feet is small. But, you know, six hundred feet is small. Also, it is even for a couple that's small, and they may not be comfortable. You'd like that for someone who makes that their own. And if they're not comfortable with six hundred square feet. Um, they're gonna, they're not gonna stay.
And then it's gonna be short-term.
Right. What about, what, what parameters do we do on the multifamily?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be short-term.
Bedroom, for the number of bedrooms, and so what, what's?
Um, that was a floor area ratio.
Oh, right.
Um, we.
Right.
So for two bedrooms, I was just trying to think for consistency's sake, if we had two bedrooms max, then. I mean, I, I can't, I personally can't see going any larger than eight hundred, to me, it just, you're just turning duplexes.
I, I mean, but when you're talking about duplexes. If you, if you have a smaller house, that you then have an attached ADU. If the, if the house itself is eighteen hundred or two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Then. You're, you're limiting the, at fifty percent, you're limiting to the size of, of the ADU unit, so the smaller the house, the smaller the unit anyhow.
Right.
Well, you're trying to get, you're trying to get people to be there long-term and be comfortable long-term. You got a kitchen, you've got some storage, you've got some stuff. Twelve hundred square feet is big, but you can only do that for so many houses.
Mm-hmm. It wouldn't be very many.
Right.
Wouldn't be very many.
Right, if it, if it's, if it's fifty percent of habitable of the main structure. You know, you're, you're reducing. The size of the ADU, but you're, you're discouraging long-term rental by doing that. I don't, I don't see the difference between eight hundred and twelve hundred as far as what we're trying to accomplish.
I think eight hundred allows you to build a comfortable, long-term unit, it could potentially have two bedrooms. There may be two people, uh, single, young, they get jobs down here. We still know the rent is gonna be high on that unit, but two people sharing the rent could handle it. Um, if it's a couple and they did happen to have a baby. Um, it, that would be taken care of in that circumstance, or if it's just a couple. Older couple, younger couple, it doesn't matter, that additional bedroom could function as an office or a, or a den or whatever.
Right.
So that you're not right on top of each other all the time, I just, eight, eight hundred just seems to me to be a better long-term. Inhabitable space than six hundred.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, Kelly, isn't the septic gonna weed a lot of this stuff out anyway?
Yeah.
Perhaps.
I mean, because you can't add more to a certain amount of a septic tank, I mean, the, when they go to do it.
Right.
It's gonna weed that out anyway.
Number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
It could if they're unwilling to.
Maybe.
Change their onsite septic, but everybody does have the option to go to an advanced system, so if they wanted something bad enough, they could go to it in advance.
But you have to have enough land to do that, I mean.
And money.
Advanced systems tend to be smaller in area than conventional systems sometimes, but, um, but they're a lot more expensive. And they come with annual maintenance, so.
And they require more maintenance, don't they?
They do.
Yeah.
What if we compromised and went to two thousand?
I personally think eight hundred's enough, let's do a, let's do a quick show of hands, David, what, anybody? I'm good with eight hundred, I can. Eight hundred.
Okay. Fifty percent.
Grabber.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifty percent.
Yeah.
I just, you know, if you're gonna be in the long-term, you got storage, you've got other stuff.
So you're foreseeing, because I doubt there's too many twen-, so let's say we'd have to, to do twelve hundred, you'd have to have a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot house? And you're gonna.
Twenty-four.
You're gonna design that and build it now, because I don't think there's too many houses that size that you could just add one easily.
But I don't think so either.
So you're just thinking, do it in case there's a couple that could happen, or?
Yeah, I'm just saying that it gives you more room, if you're gonna be long-term, you've got storage and you've got other things. That you're going to need room for, you know.
What about eight hundred heated space, like Manio does? Isn't that what Manio said, eight hundred, eight hundred?
Uh, they were six hundred.
Heated space.
Well, and that's, that's kinda why I went into that shared area, that's, because a storage room.
They were six hundred. Yeah, that, that's gonna be a big bear for you all.
My boogie boards are your boogie boards, you know, I, I, I don't, and, and, you know, heated conditioned space, it's, it's a little bit of, of the same thing. Um, yeah. If, if there's, how about if this is, if there's a stairway, is that, is that shared?
Okay. I think, I think ha- heated or, or conditioned.
Okay, so I think we're.
Eight hundred.
Is that a big pain in the butt for, for planning to monitor that?
I mean, that's a, that's an issue right now, so it will just continue to be an issue, um.
The heated versus unheated? Uh, right, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Can you, yeah.
And that's, you know, and that's fine, part of what we deal with is.
Okay, so.
You know, people develop storage areas that become.
Habitable.
Habitable over the course of all, they become conditioned, so that's just inevitable.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so maybe it's just the square footage then, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's move on, we'll say eight hundred heated or conditioned space.
And that's for attached and detached?
I would think so, I can't see distinguishing, I mean, I know you made your comments about, but to go smaller on a detached, I mean, isn't the same issue we're talking about with year-round living?
Yeah.
I personally think you might have a better chance of having somebody.
Settle in.
Settle in and stay in a separate, in a detached?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Maybe, I don't know, you know, but if the, if the goal is long-term housing, you know. Um, so, I don't know if detached are gonna fly anyway.
I spent a, I spent a lot of my life living in four hundred and twenty square feet.
You what?
I spent a lot of my life living in four hundred and twenty square feet, yeah, yeah, you remember, yeah.
Yeah.
On the beach area.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it is.
So we've got, we've got that nailed down, let's move on to, um, driveways and parking, I think, um.
Yes, so. Um, what's up on the screen is what other people are doing, um. I, from my perspective, I would not. Recommend aligning it with our residential parking standards, because right now that is. The number of bedrooms minus two with a minimum of two. Um. And so I, I think you could run into a scenario where someone could develop an ADU, but not necessarily have to have another parking space.
I, I really see that.
So I would not recommend that.
It's because this is, this is kind of, this is a, a new use, I would think that it would be adjunct to the residential standard, it would seem that.
In addition to.
This should add to it, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the, the biggest, the biggest question, um, right off the top of my head is. I don't see any need for, to have two separate drive areas. Which, you know, should, should the parking area for the ADU be separate? I don't think that, that's needed.
What, you're talking about the driveway?
Yeah.
They have a shared driveway.
Share the driveway?
Yeah, I think that can be shared.
Again, there's definitely some already that aren't doing, that have separate driveways, but.
There are, and just, so, um, you're aware, the town, as far as, um, for a single-family dwelling for your driveway. It has to be a minimum of twelve feet. And a maximum of twenty-six. So we do have people on the, from the beginning come in and say they want two cuts. And so they'll do thirteen and thirteen, so that they get that twenty-six, but they do have two cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we technically do allow. That now.
Right.
As long as you don't exceed twenty-six.
Total.
Total.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, people definitely.
We should keep what we have, I, I think one space for ADU plus one space for each bedroom over one.
Which would be a maximum of two then, right? Because we only allow two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that makes good sense, simple and straightforward, right?
Mm-hmm.
One. And it's not too much.
Of course, I guess people could say you only have one bedroom and then use it as two bedrooms, but. I guess that happens.
Well, and, you know, and then you have the whole issue of the main.
Mm-hmm.
Dwelling. And how much parking they have, which of course would at least be the minimum, and then how they're using it, how many people, you know, I mean. There's, there's no way to control every little bit of this forever.
Right, exactly.
I don't necessarily think that one space per ADU, it's, and it sounds like, you know, Kitty Hawk's allowing them to be used short-term. So you probably do have people coming for a couple of nights in one vehicle.
No matter what you pick, it's gonna be a cluster.
Yeah.
No matter how you do it, I see it, I grew up in a house of five kids and one driveway, and by the time we were teenagers, we all had cars.
And one bathroom, yeah.
So whoever has to go to work, I mean, first day of school, they used to work at six-thirty, and they're out there six, six-thirty morning, jockeying cars around.
He's gonna stack them, yeah. And too much, too much driveway or too much parking all, leads to, um, diminished chances of these things happening too.
Can I play devil's advocate really quickly?
Please.
Um, with the new legislation with SB three eighty-two and downzoning. There's also, um, a tra- a, a philosophy that perhaps we wouldn't want to upzone, knowing that we can't downzone, so.
Yeah. I agree.
If we pick. One space per ADU. And we find out, oof, that's not enough, it should be two, we will not have an option to go back and make it two.
Right.
Because that's downzoning, so I'm not saying air on the high side, but knowing that you can't rein it back in. Um, you need to just keep that in mind as well.
Kelly wants us to go bigger.
I did not say that, but I'm telling you.
I know, but I heard, I mean.
Right, you can't go the other way.
To consider that, like, I, I would hate. Yes, you know, additional parking means more lot coverage means more stormwater. But if we do this and there's not enough parking, we're, we're left with an ongoing problem. Because unless something changes, we're not able to require more.
We're gonna pick, we're gonna bind.
I still like the KDH model.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I do too, I think we just can't, we just have to do what we think makes sense and then, you know, they're gonna repeal three eighty-two anyway, that's, that section. Right, Duke?
But you can also.
Who's your source?
I know.
We'll talk.
I know. Exactly. Um. Okay, so we're gonna stick with the KDH model, or with one space plus one space for each bedroom over one? So let's pict- real quick, let's picture who's gonna be in most of these, and they are gonna be long-term only, right? We, we've kinda stopped talking about that.
Well.
There's no more discussion about deed restrictions or anything like that, so.
If there's no deed restriction, then it's what everybody wants it to be.
Right.
Right, it can be long or short.
Yeah. But short-term rentals are going down, so maybe these will be more long-term rentals.
Maybe it will be.
Maybe, yeah, right, hopeful.
And it, and it may fluctuate over the years.
Yeah.
It's depending on.
But parking is an issue then, and.
There's no restriction on saying that the occupant of the current principal building couldn't opt to. Stay in the accessory and rent out their principal.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's a, that occurs as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So we still good with the parking we're recommending, or do we wanna?
The other alternative being just require two spaces, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Since we're limited to two. Two bedrooms.
Mm-hmm. Two spaces for all of them, regardless of how many bedrooms or whatever.
Well, I think you limited to two bedrooms.
Right, but we're talking about number of spaces, we were saying one space per ADU.
If you had a one-bedroom ADU that was three hundred square feet, would we really wanna require two hundred, I mean, two parking spaces?
I know.
And take up that lot coverage like that?
K, KDH, looks pretty good then. Think so.
Are we good with sticking with that, everybody? Okay, we're so enthusiastic today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, what else do we need to talk about?
I think those are our big questions, I, we will need to come back to you in February with a formal ordinance, an ordinance form for you to consider.
Form.
Um. The only thing, and you can let us know if you're interested in this, is do you wanna see a map of sixteen thousand that excludes. Some of these undeveloped parcels, like Jockeys Ridge, I don't know that it matters that much, but that's the only other thing.
Does everybody feel like they have a pretty good feel for that and we're still, we're still in a agreement to, that we should, would. Be okay with both attached and detached?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I will spell out in the staff report our current allowances for commercial ADUs, because I realized when that came up, that wasn't in your staff report, and that is our information.
Right. Um, yeah, regarding the detached ones nationally, you know, we're, they're, they're really, and Duke probably speak to this as well, they're, they're really not inexpensive to build. So the idea that they're gonna pop up all over town, um.
Fifty thousand dollars is like a low number to put in.
What, what figure did you give?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can't imagine, to build a detached.
That's one of the things, and then if you gotta start putting your septic improvements, they're a little too large.
Right.
It's not cheap.
No.
To do it, but it's not a paid investment. And you can invest fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars and do it at. Rein fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Right.
You know, it, it, your payback is, is, is three or five years.
And it's a permanent improvement to your property, I, I can't.
It, it, it solves a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Of, of, of people, you know, coming here at the hospital or, you know, we always say cops are part of men and they're police, but it's, it's a lot other.
Teachers. Right.
What do we do with our tourists at the restaurants, you can't go see the restaurant, back to those COVID days, retail stores.
Right. Oh, I.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I always like to talk about the other end of the spectrum too, which is people aging in place or having either caregivers. Or, you know, in one place or the other.
I wanna sell my house and rent, that's my trick, but I have three thousand to put out that I live alone, it's a waste.
How do we? Right.
And, and I'd be twelve thousand for a pocket or something.
Right.
And I can't, but I'm not gonna pay the cost to him twenty-five hundred dollars a month to rent something. That was going in the eighties.
Right. And that's, yeah.
Can I reference my memory on what?
Eighties are far too.
What was the maximum size that we allowed for multifamily?
It was a great decade.
It was a really great decade.
Yeah.
Do you remember?
Okay.
Thank you.
It was a whole different beach.
So, do you think you have what you need from us to move on?
Yes, I do.
And, and I don't?
Well, I just had a question, what was the maximum size of a unit that we allowed for multifamily housing?
Okay.
Was it eight hundred or a thousand?
Let me pull that up real quick.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think it was twelve hundred, wasn't it?
Maximum size?
Maximum size of a unit. Like.
It was bigger.
Oh, right. I'm just curious, like.
In the multifamily.
Yeah.
I wanna say twelve hundred, but.
Have we talked about that in that, in that multifamily, I think it was like the house.
Can't remember at all.
So you think you'd like it to be consistent, or?
No, I'm just curious, they have, like, if we really truly want long-term people to live here, like eight hundred, is eight hundred welcoming enough, like?
Yeah.
Shark fishing, man, that's the dumbest thing.
Yeah. If I have here again, then do you wanna make them huge and then find out the people are designing these things all over town, you're. But like she's like, Kelly was saying, like, if we, if we allow, wait, we, no, I'm confused.
If we allow them to be twelve hundred, and they start popping up everywhere and people are, calling, but you can't go back to, right now.
Can't go back to. Well, we can go up to eight hundred.
You can always up, you can go up.
That's true, we could always go up. If there's like massive demand and we need.
Right, and people are trying to build.
If they want to.
Okay, that makes me feel better, I was thinking of it the other way around, but you can't go, you can go up.
No. Right, oh yeah, you can always go up, just can't go down right now.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
So, I would hate.
That's the thing we were talking about.
Uh-huh.
Right there.
Here we go, um.
Do we have one bedroom?
Seventeen five.
So we.
And it was a thousand.
Oh, maximum, you said seventeen fifty?
There was a lot of talk then that five was, I mean, when this passed, five was doable, even detached.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, ADUs, five was perfectly doable.
Right, and those were the new ones.
So we're.
Yeah, okay.
So it's five, seven, and a thousand.
Three bedrooms, eleven, three, yeah.
Seven, that's three bedrooms.
Okay, well.
Maximum. Seventeen fifty.
That was a small derail, I guess I'm, I, we'll stick with a hundred.
I mean, a beach box is nine sixty, right?
We'll stick with a hundred.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're talking about going bigger than that for a subordinate part of a house, I think.
To Kelly. Right.
I just, I think we're good on eight hundred. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh.
Where are we at?
Okay. So, um, Kelly, do you have anything? Yeah, I think it, we got through some. Yeah, I think it, we got through some things. Um different for your director's report than we've heard previously? I'm sure you do.
I don't believe so. Actually, the big thing in my director's report was what Chris Trembley, our planner, is gonna be presenting here shortly, which is the
Not really? Okay, good.
Um Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative. That was the primary thing. Everything's still moving, Estrein Shoreline Management Plan, D W M P, we are progressing along there.
Beginning. Okay. Okay. So you wanna talk about your work plan?
Sure.
Please?
It looks very similar to our twenty twenty-four work plan. Um a lot of this uh was from the Board of Commissioners Retreat. So this comes from our strategic plan and priorities for implementation. So um first item we have there is the ESMP and that is ongoing, but we keep it on our work plan so that we know um that that's an ongoing item. The Decentralized Waste Water Management Plan, um that is ongoing as well. Um and we continue to give updates in the director's report for that. Um identifying and correcting areas of incompatibility within the town, inconsistencies between the comp plan and the UVO. Um there were some examples given here. Revisit the appropriateness of the hotel overlay district. So at our last meeting, we got to the point of making a recommendation for that. That cannot move forward because of SB three eighty two, but it is queued up so that um if anything does change with that legislation and we're allowed to move forward, it'll be ready. And that's really how we're gonna move forward. Um items that this board needs to discuss that may be considered down zoning, we're not going to not talk about them. We're gonna go ahead and discuss them and try to have them queued up so that should things change, they're ready. Um so to that, identifying areas for zoning designations and existing development patterns may not be aligned. That's similar to what we did with the C five, but we wanna look at that townwide. Um examining Vetrod and one fifty-eight uses and then looking at the Commercial Outdoor Recreation Overlay District. Um. That's something that we'll be bringing to you, I would imagine, within the next couple of months. I think that's a relatively um important thing for this board to see.
What's the impetus behind that?
The Commercial Outdoor Recreation Overlay.
Yeah, I mean, what, what needs to be looked at?
Couple things. So um that language is really old. And it is very confusing as to what your principal use and your accessory uses have to be and how the combination of uses interact. Um the other thing that I think is worth a conversation is, and we noticed this during the multifamily conversation. A lot of those large lots where we have go-kart tracks and putt-putt, things like that, those are those have underlying lots within them. So um just to be cognizant that with no changes, single-family dwelling and duplex is allowed in the Commercial Outdoor Recreation Overlay District. So if the current use were to go away and those underlying lots then became available, that's something we need to think about.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Very sure.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted a preview.
Yep. Um.
Good to know.
And then obviously, we're working on our ADUs right now, residential lighting, um we're getting ready to have a great presentation on that. Um facilitation of merchants association. This isn't so much for the planning board, but something that the planning staff will be working with. Um our event coordinator Paige Griffin and our tax collector, um Linda Wittner and Jackie Semansky will be working with them on that, just to create a, a repository of our business owners and maybe do some newsletters, things like that, where we're able to provide them the information and also give them a way to communicate with us better than perhaps they um have been in the past.
Was there initiative like this bef- previously?
It was, it was.
Like after folk?
Um there was a local business committee several years ago.
Okay. Right, okay.
Um that did some of that.
But this is. Right, okay.
Yes. Um. Chris Trembley is also working on this next item, which is just to clarify within our codes that commercialization of the beach is prohibited. It's in our comp plan and it's very clear. Um but as we talk about beach concierge, the lines get blurred, so we wanna make sure that that's um black and white and not so blurry. Um. Explore amendments to regulate outdoor accessory entertainment and recreation uses at restaurants separate from customer service. Um this is just something that we need to start thinking about where you have restaurants that obviously are, are parked by customer service area. Um and then they have their waiting area. But then they also have some other things going on. Some of them have music, um where you don't even have to go into the restaurant just to go watch the music, but there's parking associated with that. And um have pop-up markets that, y- things like that, just some recreational things that we need to think about. Um and maybe we do nothing with it, but we at least wanna have the conversation. Um talked about getting more input at our planning board meetings, so creating a hot topics and planning webpage that talks about some of the more important things that we've done in the past, what we're doing now and what we think's going to be coming up. So a lot of this uh work plan, like this work plan would be on that hot topics page. Um and any other ways that we can enhance uh public input, we talked about maybe hosting. But the public input sessions that we did with ADUs was really nice. So anytime we have a topic of that magnitude, um to maybe consider doing a public input session just to get feedback. Um what we talked about earlier, allowing multifamily development on existing mixed-use sites. Um and then this is just more for us internally to continue our digitization efforts, um because there's a lot of paper over there in planning, it takes up a lot of room. Um and then uh pursuing potentially updating our parks and recreation plan. It's an old plan. Uh we realized that when we've applied for part-of-grants recently, because our plan is outdated, we don't get points um that we otherwise could be getting. So working on an update to that in the coming year, so.
That's, it's a lot, busy times.
How, how old is, how is that, how old is the Parks and Recs plan?
Oh goodness, do you know?
Four years, thirteen years now.
Okay.
Oh wow.
Nothing's changed.
Oh.
Okay, well, we have to wrap this up so they can get back to work. They have a lot to do on here.
And only eleven months left to do.
I know, only eleven month, right, exactly. Okay, thank you, Kelly. Anybody have questions for Kelly on the work plan or? Okay, so great. Mr. Trembley is with us this morning to um do a presentation on Dark Skies Bright Stars. Good morning.
Morning, how's everybody doing?
Great.
Great.
You?
Just an intro. Uh I was gonna say, I, I intro'd this to the Board of Commissioners at their last meeting um and realized that it's getting a lot of momentum now and Chris is
It is. Thank you, sir.
um really
Thank you.
Taken the lead on this and I appreciate, we all appreciate you so much for wanting to.
Absolutely.
Well, you're.
Can't wait to hear it.
It's gonna work, so.
All right.
Made a quick follow along.
I'm gonna try to pull this up.
Whatever it's, you know, after dark, after bangs, or when we always call it off things, I'm like, what is it still called?
Oh, it is after dark, yeah.
Yeah.
It's dark there.
Registration Sunday. Sign up for ball and dancing. I expect you in case to be there.
All right, as we mentioned, I'm Chris Trembley, I'm one of the towns planners. Um today I'm gonna talk about Allen. Um if you're not familiar with Allen, the buzz term, it uh represents artificial light at night. So artificial light at night is uh what brings us to um talking about our bright stars, dark skies. Um this was started with one of our strategic plan action items, two point five, which was recommending a non-regulatory approach to minimizing residential lighting and its impacts. Wow, I can't read that far. So basically this slide just talking about um understanding what artificial light at night is. Um uh let me see. While artificial lighting enhances safety concerning invisible, uh it poses challenges to wildlife, human health and the natural beauty of our environment. By understanding the effects of Allen and adopting responsible lighting practices, we can strike a balance between progress and preservation. Uh so in in to, in order to improve our lighting situation, next slide, we came up with the Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative. So within our Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative, I don't know if you gotta hit another button again. It is a community-driven effort focused on reducing light pollution, which is Allen. Encourages residents, businesses and visitors to minimize unnecessary artificial lighting. Uh the initia- initiative aims to protect wildlife, enhance public health and ensure that the future generations can enjoy the stunning views of our stars. And through public uh participation, education and thoughtful lighting practices. Uh Nag's Head seeks to balance the needs of modern living with environmental sustainability and the preservation of its coastal nightscapes. So um one little tidbit information, um the global light has increased two percent per year, so. So one of our ways of addressing this is, you know, where do we start? So Mr. uh Drecker up there um is known for saying you can't manage what you don't measure. So for the last three months, we got a uh sky meter. And uh me and Joe, we actually went out to the beach and uh took some GAPS coordinates, uh took a sky meter, uh went on new moon nights and um took some readings just to see where we are um with the uh, where our sky stands. And so with the uh information that Joe and I took on the beach with the uh GPS, uh he was able to create a GIS map where we're tracking all of this data. Excellent, there we go. So this is the meter we use. Um we go out, it's just a basic one-button meter. We pour it the zenith and it measures the magnitudes per square arc second, um which is just a astronomical unit. Um it's kinda counterintuitive that the lowest number is the brightest skies and the, the higher numbers is the darkest skies. Um again, we do this at astronomical twilight, which is when the sun is eighteen degrees below the horizon. That way there's no sun trespass or sunlight left. It's, it's as dark as the sky can get once it's below the eighteen degrees until it reaches morning, eighteen degrees before the morning. So. So this is the data that Joe and I have taken. Um you'll see on there the different streets um that we've gone to. Um put the GPS coordinates, I take five measurements, um and then we compile the um, the average and the median. Um and then Joe puts this onto our website on a GIS mapping. So this is the GI- GPS mapping that uh Joe has done. Um the brighter dots are the brighter skies and the darker dots are the darker skies. Um we can go to the next one. So it's interactive, so you can click on the actual dots and it looks like right there, that's Nag's Head Woods. And you can see, I can't see that far, but.
It's um, the reading is twenty-one, twenty oh nine in December.
Okay, so and so that one is, you know, the twenty-one point oh nine, December, which is a fantastic reading. You can go to the next slide. Um and then you go all the way down to like ramp one, Surfside, um I believe that one, is that one Holden Street?
It is Holden.
Holden Street, a little bit brighter, you're starting to get more toward the center of the town, more into more lighting. But again, you can see what dates we were out there and what the actual readings are. Um as we progress with this, you know, there'll be more readings and we may be able to compile the data in a little bit more digestible way. Um with that data, I also report our numbers to Globe at Night, um which is, you can get to that from Dark Sky International. And they also do a GPS plotting um of the stars. If you can go to the next, there, there we go. So as you can see, throughout the world, uh people are doing these readings. And if, I took a little clip of Nag's Head, there's the readings that we did on the beach. And as you can see, we're pretty, we're doing pretty good in the grand scheme of things when you get around the, compared to the bigger cities. Um so how do we educate? Um the language of lighting and types of outdoor lighting. I know many of you remember, you know, quite a few years ago when it was just the incandescent bulb, but now we have the LED which makes up fifty percent of the global sales of lighting. Um we've got halogen, incandescent, mercury vapor, high pressure, low pressure, and the choice go on and on, so you can go to the next slide. Um you can see that it can get kinda confusing on what your choices are and what even smart choices would be. Uh one of the biggest changes would be your lumens versus watts. You know, as I was saying, like the incandescent bulb from many years ago, you might remember, we had like fifteen watt, a sixty watt, a hundred watt. Um watts really don't mean a lot anymore. Um an LED you, only uses like ten watts compared to a sixty watt light bulb, frosted and unfrosted. Um so trying to understand, you know, we're not in, we don't measure stuff by watts anymore, we measure it by lumens. Um so up there it shows you that eight hundred lumens is equal to, excuse me, sixty watt light bulbs equal to uh eight hundred lumens. And a uh LED only uses eight to ten watts, so. All right, so this is some of the advertisement you'll see out there, um which also clouds your judgment on what to buy. You know, large size, super light range, I don't know what that means. Three hundred and fifty meters square, I'm guessing that's the surface area. The twenty thousand watts, I have no clue what they're trying to convey there, except it's big, it's bright and it uses a lot. Um so to minimize our impacts, um we're, we're wanting to reduce our impacts on health and nature and choose options with warmer color temperatures, which brings in another bit of jargon for, you know, language of lighting is um we're using the words Kelvin now, um and that's not the brightness, but rather the warm or coolness of the light. So your warm being more the amber, your cool being more the white blue light. Um the white blue light is more of what disrupts, you know, like talk about sea turtles, nature, circadian rhythms and that type of stuff. So we wanna employ smart solutions like dimmers, timers and motion sensors. So for the, the brighter lights, you know, we want to have them one, little as possible, more focused um in, in using more of the amber type of lighting. So here's a little color temperature chart. Um the three thousand is what our commercial codes usually represent. Uh we don't allow anything higher than that. Um and recently, if you wanna go to the next slide, oh, sorry. Um right there, that's what I was looking for. That's uh Jeanette's Pier. They've recently changed their lighting out to be more friendly. Uh that's more your twenty-two hundred range Kelvin. Um it gives you that nice warm um glow. And if you notice there to the left, you can see some of the white lighting, which is more of that cool lighting. You can actually see, this was taken from a cell phone, it's, I know it's not great, but you can actually see the sky glow bubble around where the white light is and as you get more to the right, the skies seems to get a lot more dark. Um we can go back one. So um this is from Dark Sky International. Um this really reiterates what we're looking to educate people on is if their light is useful, if it's targeted, um using low-level lighting, just what's necessary to use. Uh making sure that um it's controlled, using it where you need it and using the warm, more warm colors below the three thousand Kelvin light at level. So Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative on the web. So Roberta has put together this uh webpage off our website. Um this is up and going right now. And it has kind of like our mission statement right there. And it has kind of like our mission statement right there below, talking what our goals are and it's a community effort. You'll also notice that you can get to links for assessing your property's outdoor lighting. There's the GIS map, the interactive map that Joe has done. Go to the next one. It has a description of light pollution. It kind of explains shielded light, cutoff lights, you know, having timers and shut-offs. There's other useful information. This is really a information-dense webpage. It has links to Dark Sky, it tells you what you can do about light pollution. It goes back to that chart, you know, talking about where it's useful. From the dark skies, you can do the printable resources for the assessment of your property and what you have and how you can make things better. Also, there is a video that Roberta has worked on. Or, excuse me, rather. What is that, Destination Dare? So, Destination Dare put this video together, Roberta's worked with them. It's about a three-minute video, and I'd like to show it to you real quick and then open up the questions. So, any questions? I mean, it's a fantastic video, I think it's.
I have a question and a point. There's a, there's a perception that a well-lit property is more secure. And there was a, there was a break-in in a building in the, in one of my neighbor's houses in the area. And directly afterwards, everybody went bananas with lights. And the problem with the fixtures that are still in use and were in manufacture, let's call it three to five years ago, are they were built for, for light bulbs that are not on the leading edge of this. And therefore cast a greater, and when shade is a thing. And this is something that, from my point of view, living outdoors, working outdoors, as soon as I look at a light, I'm blind. And I can't see anything. And when, when we look out the window of our houses at night, because there's a rustling and there's something that isn't comfortable, one thing we're looking at is the light of the thing that might be bringing that change, a vehicle, whatever it might be. But if you look out the window and there's no light, I see more. Very often, when I'm on searches at night on the beach, the first thing that I do to everybody is have them shut almost all their lights off except the lights that I need to be able to use to navigate the area, because I can't see anything beyond those lights. But as soon as those lights are off, I can see a lot more. So, the, a well-lit lot isn't any more secure from my point of view. It isn't any more safe from my point of view. It isn't, it, it might be more observant from a point of view, but only if you have the light looking your direction. So, this offset is, is a point of order that I think that this doesn't cover, that might be spoken to by the police, because they're, it's their wheelhouse.
And, and that's a common concern and a common talking point when talking about dark skies and illumination. What we're really trying to do is educate, you know, glare, trespass, and teaching them more about, you know, full cutoff. So, it's lighting your area, so with your concerns, but not causing glare onto the neighbors. You don't really have to have that four thousand Kelvin light. You can dial it back to a three thousand, which is still pretty white. But, you know, preferably we'd want more of the twenty-two hundred, which is more of the amber. But focusing the light where you need it, maybe using the motion sensors. A lot of the lights, you can get the high-low now, where it's a low, very low soft light, something comes into range, it goes to really bright for one or two minutes and then back down low again. So, that's where I would try to educate people, to push them to use those options rather than a twenty-four-hour beacon of light that just spills out everywhere.
But there's no teeth behind this, like if you have annoying neighbors.
Correct, correct.
Is there, is there any, is, does the commercial ordinance have teeth?
The commercial ordinance does have teeth. We can go out and do the light audits. Whenever light fixtures are changed out, we'll, we'll go out and make sure they're within compliance. But a lot of that works done on the front end. We have to know what the Kelvins are, what the height of the light is. And then, you know, for whatever their zoning is in use, we check for that.
I would say that in the residential use, there definitely needs to be more education. When you go to buy a light bulb now, you know, it used to just be the one that Mr. Edison invented. And that was very simple. It was, you know, seventy-five watt, sixty watt. Now, between the Kelvins and the lumens and the wattage, people just look and they go, okay, the bigger the number, the better.
I know.
Right.
And also, too, I think that there is beginning to be more pushback on the brighter bluish lights. People dislike those.
Right.
And third point, my wife has cataracts. And the brighter and bluer the light, the worse it is on her eyes. And she, it just blinds her. So, definitely softer lighting is better.
And that's a lot of the international conversation is the LED technology has gone so quick, so fast, and so cheap that for very low costs and low energy consumption, you can create daylight. And we're starting to understand those effects on, you know, turtles, birds, our circadian rhythms, you know, melatonin. You know, all these things are becoming a factor that, we didn't realize it. But now we're starting to get caught up with understanding that this is changing our environment and changing our biology.
Not to mention just being able to enjoy the natural, you know, situation.
One, one thing that just occurred to me is, is if there was a, some literature, easily understood, quickly read, that could be put like Ace Hardware, Lowe's, Home Depots, where somebody that's looking for light could say, which light is best for you? You know, and but talk about the fact that, you know, too bright and creates problems, so.
And that's a direction that we've, we've talked about doing is, is talking to, like, you know, we have an Ace Hardware in town. Lowe's and Home Depot are actually on the Dark Sky International's website for partners. I did go to Home Depot and look at lighting. And it's, it's, for me, it was chaos still. Like, I know what a cutoff light is, but there's really nothing that drives you in these directions, but maybe talking with them and saying, hey, Outer Banks-style lighting or something that pushes, pushes towards our vision.
Have a chart at the place, yeah.
Right.
That would be great.
Another thing that is kind of in this mix, but we can't, obviously can't do anything with here, is DOT. DOT only defines light as white in color. And this, you know, so that, that's looking back into a cave as far as legally understanding. And a lot of the lights that I define as more difficult to drive into with an opposing vehicle on the road are the brighter white-blue end of it. And it, it's to the point where it's nearly painful. So, that, I, you know, I'm, we can't do anything like that, but.
And that's the LED.
Go to Sherwin-Williams and tell me how many whites there are.
LEDs are worse sometimes than regular ones.
There's, there's, this is a, this is a burgeoning area and industry is leading.
Well, recently I've signed up for Dark Sky International as an ambassadorship. They have a website where I connect with a bunch of other planners, community leaders and such. Pennsylvania or Pittsburgh, one of their large donors, where they're changing out all their city lights. And they do like a, an earth hour where they turn all their lights off, so people can look at the city, what it's like without the lights. So, there, there is a large source of information out there. Like I said, Dark Sky International, our website pushes a lot of stuff to them. There's a lot of information, if you get a chance to look at our, our website, what we put on there. Also, I encourage you to go out to some of those spots that I have tested.
Yeah, speaking of that, when you put down like the name of a street, where on the street are you measuring?
I go over the walkover onto the beach. And I go to a spot where I don't see a direct light bulb from a house or anything, and there's no light trespass. I'm trying to find the darkest spot I possibly can. When I go out there, it's a new moon night, so there's, you know, the moon is not waxing, you know, it's, it's as dark as possible. I also, I've been fortunate that I can wait till a time when the moon has set. So, I can't visually see it, but I can look online and see when moon sets, so I don't have any natural illuminations. So, when I'm going out and taking these readings, it's the darkest possible situation that we could have. So, as you get north there of Holden Street, you start getting near the brighter piers, you know, the, the parking lots and all that. So, the readings aren't as, as great. But, you know, when I'm down around the Surfside area, you can see, when you look to the south, the very dark skies and all the stars. And then as you look to the north, you can see the glow of the town. Well, that is the brightest point on the map up there is H Street, so.
I'm wondering, doesn't the, the town's plan for beach renourishment have some, something like this in it with turtles? I thought that John CC, I know in the past I've taken John CC for a ride to establish lighting on the beach to, just to keep an eye on it, whether there's been anything added in my, in my area.
I think there's, I think the town has taken a genuine interest in trying to move this forward. Especially as part of the nourishment project while we have people.
You know, the naked light bulb, the bare light bulb is awful. And it's bad, you know, it, you know, it blinds you. But a shaded bulb is directive and useful, so it's, you know, sharpen your tools and make them work for you.
And one thing I have noticed, even with the cutoff, the, the height of the bulb matters. So, if the lights are thirty feet in the air, it doesn't really matter if it's cut off or not. It's, you're looking, still looking straight out at it. So, try and encourage people to bring your lights down to a lower level. As code enforcement, one of the biggest complaints I got was pools in the summertime. When you get to a lot, these rows of the five thousand square foot houses with, all with pools, it's daylight twenty-four-seven off the back of the house. And if I get a chance to speak with some of these people, I'd say, hey, do the lighting like at the fence level around the pool, so it's focused there. And it's not thirty feet in the air at the top of your house, folk, you know, putting light onto the beach.
And when it comes to education, don't, don't leave out our visitors either, or, you know, real estate companies' information that can be disseminated, because people, there are people visiting who are willing to pitch in and it kind of fosters the type of relationship we want with our visitors. Point out to them, and they're unfamiliar with the switching and stuff. We always encourage everyone to label everything, because people don't know. And they're, they're unsure, so they just leave everything on all the time instead of, you know, so.
Yeah, I think labeling switching is a, you know, you go to some of these houses, you're new to it, you know?
Right.
There's thirty-two switches and you don't know which one's a spotlight off the back, so.
And then they get inside and they can't see that those lights are even on. They don't know the lights are on once they get inside, so, you know, I, I think it would be worth trying to, and also maybe a stop or two at farmer's markets in the summer, like we did with the Septic Health, because that was beneficial. You know, people stop by the booth and get some information and spread the word.
Yeah.
How about a Nags Head Town Holiday for turn off your lights?
Right, yeah.
You know, and have it, have it being.
What did you call it, Earth Hour or something?
I think Pittsburgh calls it Earth Hour, where they turn off the lights for one hour, so people can see what it's like.
But it might also be kind of cool down this road. There's often a light show going on in the sky. And if we can, you know, the, you know, a meteor shower would be a really great time. And maybe the town's website could be a cool avenue to highlight that and let's do that for that.
And.
I love, Satterfield Landing is a really cool thing. In the, in the off-season, they shut the lights off in the parking lot. And it's the only time I, I can see my dog at night when I'm pointed in some directions. But when the lights are on, it's, it, it's, it's amazing how much I can't see.
This was great presentation, thank you. It's a, beg your pardon?
Added to the Outer Banks pledge, turn your lights off.
I know, right?
Yeah.
And this is a side note, the library, I think it's the Library of Manio, I'm not sure if Killdo Hills has it too, but you can rent out a telescope. So, that's, that's another avenue to look at is the astrology portion of it and getting people excited about Dark Sky.
So, we own that, we, the town owns that measuring device now, or?
Yeah, it's right here. It's just a, it's a super basic device.
Yeah.
I go out and I pace, point at the zenith and just hold it down for a few seconds. It gives me a reading. And like I said, I take it five times just to make sure my readings are consistent. Document on the chart, Joe documents on our GIS, and then I upload it to the larger.
It's GIS Joe. You'll do it again in the summer, I guess?
Oh, I do it every month.
Okay.
Every, every new moon, which right now seems to land about the twenty-eighth to the thirtieth of every month.
And so, would you go out, say a homeowners association or something like that wanted you to?
So, that is going to be more of a micro light testing. That's the one, this is, this is more macro, this is.
Yeah, well, I don't mean it like an individual site as much as a whole area of a neighborhood.
Yeah, so, there's places where I use this. This thing is super sensitive, it measures the specific wavelength of light. I have to be in a total dark spot with no visible light bulbs around me. So, like our beaches are great. And even on my documentation, when I see like Jeanette's Pier or whatnot, I have to document that I can see visible light. There's no light splash from where I am, I'm pretty far away, and I'm still getting good readings. But this is not really conducive to going in the middle of the neighborhood and checking the sky glow.
Right.
I need to go to the perimeter to check the sky glow.
I will say Chris has a great idea that he's. I will say, Chris, that's a great idea, and he's already written a full program for, for like a citizen voluntary program where someone can request, Chris, go to their property and do an analysis or an evaluation, and then offer suggestions on what they can do differently.
That kind of outreach stuff goes really, really far, and here's the thing, if no one takes you up on it, you still offered it. But there's, there's a good cha, i- i- if, you know, one point is a really good beginning.
Well, talking about the lights and all the choices, the only really way to demystify that is actually talking to somebody and reeling them in and going, alright, we're looking at Lumens in this specific range, we're looking, you know, at the temperature color in this specific range. When you're left to yourself and you go to these hardware stores, it's just, there's so much out there, and it's hard to make heads or tails, so people gravitate to more lights better.
Well, and when you buy a light bulb now, you've made a five-year commitment.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That, and then all the funny math that they put with it, that it's equal to ten light bulbs of this amount of years of brightness and.
How much money you're saving. And I have to say that the, um, motion sensors, like, like so many other things down here, between the wind and the salt and the sand, they're not necessarily all that reliable in the long run, um, timers, I think, are.
And there's different levels of ones that you buy. Um, I've had some of the cheaper ones in my house, and they blink on, off, on, off.
You mean the motion, yeah.
Yeah, and I've upgraded to ones where they're a little more expensive, but you can dial in the sensitivity. And that way, if the tree shakes, it doesn't turn light on, it's more focused to a certain area.
And they probably improve too, some of the ones I've been talking about have been around a while.
Property owners associations, homeowners associations that have annual meetings, would you be able to put together a short, easily understood, uh, presentation for, for those meetings?
I think that's a great idea, that would be, uh, Kelly. But, um, I think that is a great outlet to greet as many people as possible in a short amount of time. So I, I think that's a great avenue to go, is these HOAs, POAs. Thank you, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris, very much, that was great. Okay, so, discussion and acceptance of the twenty-twenty-five submittal calendar, our last item.
So, um, I did not move anything around, I know sometimes around Christmas we bump it back, but your December date in twenty-twenty-five is December sixteenth, so I don't know how you feel about that.
That's fine, I think, it's way before, yeah. Looks good. Unless everything looks great.
Alright, we will get this PDFed and up on the website and out to everybody.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, members' agenda, anyone?
I, I, I have one, um, it's not really an agenda, it's a thought. This, this bill that we've been talking about, that's added, um, downzoning is a, is an issue. I'm wondering how much it's going to affect, uh, property insurance rates, because it will, it will mean the density is moving up, pretty much no matter. And since property insurance is already, uh, a bit of an issue, and, um, is, is a concern, and I have read recently that, you know, we have people at the state that are looking at things and trying to secure things, the issue isn't necessarily just one thing, how much is it going to go up? But the question, the next question is, who are the players going to be? Is anybody going to want to write? And, uh, if there's no damage out here, and we're paying increased rates, that's, that's a thing, I get that. But as soon as we get damaged, is everybody going to run away? And, and, um, it's, it's, so, if we, if, how has this bill affected the market? And whether anybody wants to get into the market of writing insurance in, on, in Dare County? I know I've had changes, um, pushed to me because of withdrawal of my insurance carrier, and I'm wondering if that will also affect that. So it's a, it's an, in, i- i- if this bill, I believe, very likely might cause an increase across the board.
You might be right. Something to bear, something to keep in mind, moving forward. I'm sure staff will keep us updated as they can.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I, I will say, I'm sure many of you know the town, um, we do, we did hire a lobbyist to help us with some certain things, and keeping ahead of any changes with SB three-eighty-two, SDRs, ADUs, things of that nature, um, they'll be on top of that, so we're hoping we get information a lot faster.
That'd be great.
That's good.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, anybody else, members' agenda? And I have nothing on my agenda this morning, please, so we have a motion to adjourn, that's all we need, we are adjourned.
Perfect, Tom? Good to see you again, how was your holiday?
Oh, we're going to.
Oh, good, I did last year, great.